I actually um have the same background as Fark's chick, I am a nurse. You know, and as well, yeah, as well as an educator. I teach at a college as well, I have my bachelor's in eastern education. I started my masters, but my baby, my daughter, she was young when we started. So I left that out and I've been just doing different things. So how I came to iMarketsLive was when a friend who I trusted told me about the opportunity. I actually know, actually know my, the chairman one hundred that runs iMarketsLive in Trinidad and Tobago. He's actually a personal friend of mine, so I didn't take him on. You know, I'm like, Fark's what? Because I tried first, you know, but it's amazing, you know, with the platform that we have. And it's so inspiring, you know, and that's why I think um Fark's chick is so inspirational to me because she started off where I was, you know, as a nurse etcetera. And she's been able to do, so, I mean, be so phenomenal at it. That I'm like, if she could do it, I could do it, you know what I mean? You know, and look, look at what it has brought us, you know. You um take all the notes, like, we really appreciate you, that's amazing. Because I usually am like, oh, Cory will, you know, he will just take the notes.
Orin and Lizardo hosting an event here in Atlanta, so um
Oh.
Might be there, so I don't know if I'm gonna be on tonight.
Okay, okay.
Well, I'll be on, so.
No, well, if you're not on, I know we will definitely miss you, but you know, somebody needs to take up the mantle as well. You, you, I think you sent, you sent out how you basically um do the notes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the templates. Yeah, so, you know, come on, other people, you know, we're grateful.
Yeah, this is Selena, hi.
Hi, nice to meet you, where are you from?
Meet you, I'm from Pittsburgh.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, yeah, thank you Cory for the notes, love it.
Yes. Yes, thank you so much.
That's such a big blessing, yeah. And for doing these things, you know, like doing these calls with us, I appreciate it.
Do y'all understand the notes, like, do y'all, like, you scratch most of the time?
No, it's good, it's good, we definitely understand it, and you break it down so well. Yeah, it's like, you break it down so well, it's like, oh, I didn't even really, some of them I missed, and I didn't even really need to be on the call because your notes were so good, I was like, oh, we're good. So thank you for that.
So are we maxed out, how many people, like, I'm not seeing how many people on the call so far?
But, I mean, hey, that's.
Yeah, that's fine, you know, what we, what we wanted to do is, you know, um like, trade, educate, you know, um trade together, bounce off our ideas, see what, I know you're interested in gold. So basically, what I want to start off saying is that, you know, trading is really a mindset, ninety-five percent mindset. If you, you know, don't appreciate that, then you shouldn't be trading. Agree Cory?
I totally agree.
Yeah, it's ninety-five percent mindset, you know, there are rules to follow. And basically, if you follow those rules, you will be good, you know. Don't, but there are a lot of, yeah, a lot of um things that come out on the chat that can help you with trading, you know, how to enter trade, when to enter, but all those things are in basics in iMarketsLive. Um, and, you know, um, you know, just follow what they say, you know, you have your candlesticks. You know, you will develop like what type of trader that you are, um, you will, you will come into your own. And, you know, you just don't over leverage, don't over leverage, don't, I keep saying that all the time, don't over leverage. Okay, that is key, right? And um, just remember, just remember to just follow the rules. So, basically, I love gold. Um, I've been following Luke Longmire for the longest while, where gold is, actually, they just came to Trinidad and Tobago like about, um, probably three to three weeks ago, it was so much. And, you know, I took some notes um that he gave a goal, just give me one second.
Sorry, I just wanna make a shout out for Trinidad, because I was down in Trinidad not too long ago, girl, love Trinidad, what? I miss the food so bad, man, the doubles and duberry and, oh my gosh. It's been so long, I gotta, maybe I'll hit you up for some recipes, man.
Yes.
Alright.
Caribbean passe.
Yeah, man.
Ah, yes, that's nice, yeah, so, let me just, you know, in terms of gold, because, you know, he's the he's the trade master, me, in terms of gold, like, his setup is clean, it's simple. Right, and I just wanna share what it is he said, you know, that you should be doing, okay? Um, you have to be the CEO, and the reason why I just, I wanna start this with this is because it's very important, you know. You have to be the CEO of your life, you know, you know what they say, put in ten thousand hours and you will get, you will guess it. So, you know, you, you want something bad enough in life, you have to eat, breathe, sleep. You, you do what you need to do in order to get to your goals, you know. I, I work seven days a week, I have my job, I manage a ward. And also, I also teach part-time during the week, and I do iMarketsLive full-time. I have a daughter, you know, so that, people walk up to me and say, how do you do all those things? It's just determination and desire really, you know, because I know where I want to be in this life. And I am choosing Fark's trading as one of the tools to help me go where I am, right? So you have to, with his setup, you know, Luke Longmire, same time, same pair, same setup. He don't trade anything else except when he sees the setup. So for you, you know, you have to be the master of your own setup, alright? What works for you, whether it's support, resistance, you know, what kind of trader are you, a day trader, a scalper, you know, a swing trader? Whatever works for you, stick with it, you know, keep it, as you say, keep it simple, stupid, okay? Um, and only trade your setup, master, if you wanna master gold, just master it alone by itself, right? Use, he usually said, master, try to master, as a new trader, if you're a new trader, master, master pair, alright? Use the system, you know, what's the laws of trading, you know, proper risk management, you know, trade what you see. Like, for him, he does price action, alright, and, and less is more, you know. If it is you trying to master a certain pair, less is more, it's not like you, you know, you want to be trading all the time. No, you, you see a setup, you treat that, be disciplined, you know. Um, a lot of times, you know, you know, starts on greed steps, greed steps, and don't do it. You know, you made your money, you have your trading plan for the day, come out the market, alright? Um, be consistent, the market will humble you, you hear Fark's chick saying that all the time, the market will humble you, okay? And um, basically, that's, that's, you know, essentially what it is he was saying, you know, um, for me. Um, also, I would say, know what is your risk to reward, how much you willing to put on a trade? You know, know your analysis, do not trade unless, you know, some people, they don't put in their stop losses. And, you know, you, when you wake up, your account is blown, you don't want that, okay? So, for me, I'll just go into goals, right? And also, oh, another thing, when you on a constant winning streak, you know, it causes you to be overconfident sometimes. And then you start to over leverage, don't do that, I, you know, beg you. Right Cory, don't do it. Because you will learn.
I was gonna go over like some of my losses this week, and I'll like explain why, like, I did that stupid crap, so. I was gonna go over some of my losses and then like some of the setups that I, I might look at for this week, so.
That would be great, if you could do that.
Yeah.
Nice, so let me, let me, like, go ahead with gold. Should I go ahead with gold?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, good, nice, so let me share my screen. Yeah, let me come out to this, it's just setting this up actually, right? So who loves, who loves gold, who loves gold, I love gold, right? Cory, I, I know you said you wanna start trading gold.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't really trade it that much, but.
Why?
Probably, I, I just, I don't know, I just um, just I ain't got familiar with it yet.
Right, I hear you.
I've taken some of the calls that like
Right.
move out, and some of the stuff that um, sometimes when I get a call from Luke or um, or um, Lizardo. I've taken, I mean, they, they fare pretty good, but it's just, I just haven't familiarized myself with it enough.
Right.
What's the lot sizes and stuff like that, like, is, is it zero point zero one?
One, mhm.
And is that, that like, uh, what, how many pips is that, is that still one dollar per move? I use a zero point zero, zero point one, or do I need to change that? So I, I just never really um
Right.
mess with it.
Okay, because it could be so volatile, I guess, um, that's why he was saying, you know, zero point one for every Yeah, every hundred, I mean, that's safe from me trading gold, that's safe, you know. Um, I use Trader View and, you know, I will do on Metatrader four, but just for today. I'll use, you know, so, you know, one of the things I, I, I um appreciate about gold is that you all need to understand that gold is just not a pair that you trade off analysis alone, okay? Remember, gold is a commodity, so um, when, when major countries have any type of this is just my two cents from trading, it's about eight months now. Um, when any current, when any country has any major political decisions being made. Or, you know, basically, um, you know, there's some, like, US trade, trade wars going on. Um, you know, gold is a safe haven for everybody. For, you know, for currencies, for people, for, you know, in times of, of disaster. You know, that's where we started, we started with gold, I mean, coins, yes, so, so, and then we reached the goal. So, you know, um, you need to, you need to pay attention to the news when you are trading gold, just remember, I said so, right? You need to pay attention to news, because you may be in a trade with a perfect setup, which my team have noticed. But if any major news comes out and, you know, affecting any um major currencies, it will have an effect. Especially US dollar, because we, we're talking about um gold spot, US dollar, right? It will basically um affect price, you know, what price does, if it buys or if it sells. Okay, so, uh, basically, what my team do, we, you know, check, you know, we, we, we head over to the month, and we basically would, you know, identify what kind of trend it is. So we see all the way from, where is this here, nineteen ninety-seven, at least this broker, you know, um this is where, this is, it starts from, the history that they give. You know, it was on an upward trend, did a double top here, you know, basically, and it's been bouncing off these lines, yeah? Um, support and resistance, right, basically, right? It's from, since from, let me see, April twenty fifteen. Yeah. I was just putting, you know, basic lines, because I um removed everything that I had but mistaken benefits of persons on the call, you know, my, I'm very, I'm a very clean trader. I don't really, I don't really, you know, use a lot of fancy stuff. I am basically support, resistance, our team pays a lot of attention to news, okay? Because news really do um move the market, as, and, but, and that's why we follow Fark's chick as well. You know, that's why we do, so, yeah, support, resistance lines, right? Um, and um, within the last, you know, from twenty fifteen, this is basically what school has been doing just. That's why I put this here, in between here as well, resistance line, if you notice. So it's really, really more or less a clean setup, people think that gold, so, you know, is, is, is bipolar. But really, actually, if you put in, put in and do the analysis and pay attention to news, for me it could be highly profitable for you, right? Um, I'm not gonna name these lines as major, um, uh, monthly or whatever, you all will learn how to do that. Right, when iMarketsLive etcetera, right, if I see any major um support and resistance areas I usually put them in, you know, and weekly, I will go, you know, towards the weekly, just put them in um where price action is, right? So, let me just open up this a little bit, my goal is, yes, yes, it does behave bipolar, but you know, we, we know how to more or less, watch. This is my, this is just my two cents, let me see, more or less, here. Alright, let me see, I'll probably put in another one here. Yeah, keep it simple when it comes to gold, don't like do too much of the fancy stuff, right? My D, let me see. And as I was doing there, so I'll just leave it. Only. As I said, you all could put in your support and resistance lines, where is your C fit? Um. Right, I named that major monthly, uh, across the timeframes. I usually go up until uh, the hour, right? Because I'm more or less into the trader, yes, we could do some quick scalps, but nah. I don't have the time for that. Alright, let me just. Oh, who's drawing under screen, don't do that. Can we erase that? You know, if it was Kimberly, she'd be seeing some words there. She don't tolerate that kind of nonsense, so you all shouldn't be doing that, thank you. Right. Hey. So yeah, going back to the monthly charts, you know, let me just come down here. Right, for me Cory, you know, gold's just been dancing on this major support and resistance area, we see that, yeah. Right, just, you know, more or less in a consolidation, up and down, but um, straight, you know. Yeah, it's just, you know, yeah, you know, so, um, for the past let me just get this back here, right, it's been, it's been, you know, um, it hit this major area here above one price at eleven seventeen, more or less it respected that area the last time. So what we see gold doing here is basically, you know, doing the full retracement back up, right? Um, and that's why I said, keep it simple where gold is concerned, don't try to be too fancy, at least for me. And my team, we don't, we don't do it too fancy, alright? And um, once we know, yeah, it has been on an upward trend, we more or less analyze going all the way back up. Because once, what, what I've noticed in um, you know, with trading is that, you know once it respects the area etcetera, right? You can't trade the retracement full on back up.
So like on Friday, boom down.
Yeah, yeah, so let me show you what happened there. Yeah, let me show you what happened there.
You think it's gonna respect that one thirteen, twenty-eight, twenty-nine area right there?
One thirteen, twenty-eight, just now, this is what I did, right? So my team, good, so this is where we are with, with gold right now, yeah? Yeah, just now, let me just.
It looks like um
Nice, so what I will do is usually pull a Fibonacci, right? You have to. Right. Good, now I made a, a statement stating that, you know, gold, gold was going to more or less, um I'm gonna ride gold all the way down, and, and I mean it. You know, I mean it, so I think from what we see is that gold more or less respected um, the, you know, the zero point five and sixty-one point eight area is major reversal area, which we saw. But then it, it, it more or less went a little bit above the today area, and now you're seeing it, you know, doing a pullback here. So one or two things you expect gold to do, right, is probably go up, right? Push up, up to the twin, this, this reversal um area here, zero point two three six area, right? Um, if it, if it, um, because how gold was, is really erratic or whatever, because it did it did wick, it had a doji there, that's, that's, that's more or less Luke Longmire's um setup, wicks, doji. You know, respecting his zone and it will push up, alright? But um, if it, if it does continue pushing up, I expect it to push all the way back up. If not, right, it will come back and break the sixty-one point one area, I believe, and then push all the way back down. Um, major areas, what area are you asking me about? Cory?
I was talking about that um thirteen, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Yeah.
Your price is right now.
Yeah.
Kinda at a zone right now.
Yeah.
I was thinking the same thing, that we don't respect that.
Yes, yeah, so, you know, with gold, you know, you really have to watch, like, what price action you know, what prices doing etcetera, but also, um, I also pay attention to the news. Um, you know, price of gold fundamentally, weekly forecast, you all can read that right there. You know, if treasury yields plunge, then look for gold to soar. So you'll have to pay particular attention to that, like, you have to, because at the end of the day just know that gold doesn't move by itself, it's not just pure analysis, we have to know what's going on with politics etcetera. So, once it is, we get confirmation on this, this news here, you know then you could also more or less predict what gold is doing, understand? It's not just, you know, yes, we, we saw, hey, yes, it did, uh, respect this zone here, then push up. Is, is doing a retest here, there's a doji, let me just open it up. Right, so let's see how gold opens and behaves into the um, into Mondays. Sunday night, well, of Sunday night, well, if we see that it respects this one and continue up, I guess we could look for you know, all pips going up, but if not, right, it will reject and push. You know, I expect it to keep pushing all the way back down. I don't know, anybody else has, um, you know, trade school, like, what are your thoughts? You know, be interactive, anybody has anything else to share with gold is concerned?
Go ahead, Shanika.
I'm not seeing the chats, what she says.
I don't know, I know Shanika got something to say. This, like I said, this for everybody, man, so.
Yes, if, if you all, you know, want to say something, just say anything, if you all agree, if you all, you know. Are there any gold traders out there?
For everybody, man, we just studying, so.
Yeah, but. I'm marking up my charts now, so I don't have an analysis yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
If I see anything different, I'll just input it in the chat.
Right, do you, like, do you agree that, you know, um, with the news, that you, you do have to watch news also? To, to, yeah.
Most definitely.
Very important, you know, there was something that happened with gold, I think it was last week as well where it says, you know, it, market just turned around, because, you know, um, uh, news came out. And um, people were like, what happened to gold? And anytime you see gold is gaining momentum, just tell yourself, you know. Um, check, check and see, that's why I like trading views so much, people like, oh, why you don't use Metatrader four, Metatrader four? Um, with gold, hell no.
But you know, um, the guy who do the teacup also called it out, because the teacup was gonna form as well.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I marked his level, and it really didn't reach that level, you know?
Yeah, because it, there's, yeah, because it's, it's, it's clear, right there, you know? And that was like, that was like, uh, let me see. Wow, about fifty pips down, huh? You twenty traded a hundred pips on a nice lot size, hey, it's money. Yeah, we have to, you know, pay those bills, you know, have residual income. So, that's just my two cents on gold, you know, um, with everything that I've said before in terms of Luke. His setup is quite simple, I could show you all what his setup is, Luke Longmire. I mean, all the educators are great, I don't, I'm not like, well, no, don't, don't use this educator, don't use that, I mean, everybody has to, you know, have their own, more or less, um, preference. You know, I love Fark's chick, as I said, you know, I'm a nurse as well, um, she's in, she's very inspiring to me. Um, and, you know, it just shows me that, hey, um, anybody could do this. If she could do it, I could do it, so, much love to Fark's chick, I love her, she's a goat. And yay to the female um traders in the house, hey, females can trade too, huh? All the females on the chat.
We got this.
We got this.
That's right.
Cory, don't, don't, don't feel no way. Alright, so maybe we'll have more females, you know, while we're learning, you know, we'll present as well, right? So, uh, Luke Longmire's uh setup more or less is very clean, this is his setup here, you know?
But I, his, his setup helped me to do zone to zone, and then Kim's setup comes in where it helps me to track the um price.
Yes, yes, we love her for that, that's why we're so successful at news, huh?
Yeah, and the news, her setup is good for news, news and trapping prices is very good. And then Luke is good with the um zone to zone.
Yeah, so more or less, this is Luke's setup here, you know, uh, you know, um, respecting his zone, wicks. Okay, wicks, you know, you will get a doji candle, more or less, let me see. Yeah, this, this is, this is a better, uh, a representation of what he, he does. You know, it respects his zone, it wick, it wick, hold on. Right, patience, huh, right, wicks, wicks, wicks vectors, you will see the vectors, you see the doji, boom. Doji boom, doji boom, respect the zone, right, so you have a break, and you have the retest, boom, doji. It's just simple, his, his setup is simple, you know? Over a hundred pips, easy, easy in the market, right? No major news going on, you see the setup, he calls it, you know? Um, I, I, I say all the time, trading is not hard, it's just about discipline, you know what I mean? It's just about discipline, if you have discipline, you know, you will do well in trading. Same thing here on the bottom there. Let me just move it out, just for people who, you know, go rush, you know, um, respecting this zone, you know, break, retest, boom. You know, you have another, you have another, you know, all the way up. Good, a hundred and twenty eight pips, and it's just, if you were, if you were more or less treating this, like, people don't like to do sideways consolidation, but if it's a clean consolidation, I may do it. If you know what I mean, you know, and, um, the use of Fibonacci's is very, to me, it, it puts, it helps you to put your trades, it helps you to, you know, analyze your trades much better, right? So if we pull here, you know, squats on sometimes, I just like, you know, look at this. Alright, bounce off here, this is the fifty percent area, you know what I mean, and, you know, boom, shoots all the way up. So that's why, where prices are currently, I'm more or less pull my fib. Right, make sure I pull my fib, good. Right, yeah, so it re, more or less respected the sixty one point eight area there, you know? And then it pushed up, respected his zone, push up to the upside, retest, okay? Right, and this momentum is a bigger momentum, right, retest. So yeah, it's either we get it to push up to the upside, or it respects the zone and continues falling. Y'all agree, you don't agree, let me know, what are your thoughts? Who is on this call, where you all from? Hello?
I think it's gonna push down a little more first, but.
Yeah.
Definitely think it'll be overall buy.
Yeah, 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 well, we are still looking for it to, you know, um, complete, uh, let me just.
I think if you put, if you put like a trend line there, and if, if a candle forms under a zone, then I'll take it for a sell to continue in a, in a down, downward. But I feel like if it breaks it, and it forms a candle under a zone, I'm taking it for a sell.
Yeah, that's correct, so that's why I said, you know, earlier on, I'm like, listen, we have to watch to see what gold does, you know, into Monday, right? When it, when, when the market opens, is this what you said, pull a trend line there?
Yeah.
Yeah. It broke, it retested, it could push all the way up, if not, you know? But I do expect gold to eventually, um, come back down for this sell, so you could either do two, one or two things. You know, you could wait for it to break the sixty one point one eight area and trade it down, right? Wait for the setup and trade it down, I mean, it's, it's good pips, a hundred and eighty one pips down, right? Or, you know.
Put a trend line underneath it as well, for if it was to continue going up.
Here, where?
Counter trend.
At the end of the green candle, put one going up.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right? Is it here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. See how we're learning, yeah? Female traders out here, just now, let me just, uh, reset the area, so we can see it properly, yeah? There, right?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. Good. My thing is neat, little CD, yeah, so, yeah. So do you use more entry points?
But it also may, um, continue to consolidate on that line too.
Yes.
If the thing goes right, it's just gonna be consolidating, you probably could also box it up as well.
Yeah. This area here. Now, you know, as I said, it, I, hold on, yeah, you can. Let's just see what.
Then also look to the left to see where price started to come down at.
Yeah. Well, my apologies, but I am untreated viewer, so, let me see, I did do, let me see something, let me teach. Right, this might have given us a clearer, ooh, that's a perfect teacup there. It could push up, you know, when this teacup is here, to complete it on the D. But as you see on the D, right? It is forming a perfect teacup pattern here, it has respected this zone, the thirteen six five point area, thirteen six five area. Gold has not pushed up, you know, last time, let me see, so, April twenty eighteen, wow. You really have to see like what, um, what, um, more or less price is doing. For me, I would wait, I would wait, I would watch to see what's price is doing late into, you know, Sunday, this evening, you know, into Monday, and, and once it is, you know, it comes out of this area here, um, breaks, you know, this area, we will know exactly if it's gonna push up, right? Or, as some, I can't remember the young lady, said, you know, with my consolidated, bounced off into T E, because you know, it does that, goes, it's appeared at this, when it, it, it just bounces, and when it's ready to move, it moves, agreed? Hello?
Agreed.
Alright, so that's my two cents on gold, um, more or less, um, I love the pair, as I said, I do more or less Luke Longmire's setup, of course, but also pay attention. Oh, and my colleague, actually, she was like, she said to me, because we were studying it on Friday, and she, she told me to do this. Right, she, she, she also said that she expected it to go up to the fifty percent mark, and then retreats down, you know, yes. So either ways, you know, let's just see what, what, what it does, and, uh, we, we either continue treating it up for the buy, or, you know, wait for the breakout for the sell. Yes. Thank you, Corey.
No, no problem.
I have a question, actually.
Yes, go ahead.
Really quick, you said when something drops, I, I didn't catch what that was, that you would look for gold to go up?
Oh, um, news, you see here, price of gold fundamentally, yeah, like, when you're trading gold, you need to pay attention to news, because, you know, um, I, from my experience, it's not just pure, you know, uh, markup analysis, you know? So, look at this news, look, wait a bit, if treasury yields plunge, then look for gold to soar, you know?
Okay, tre, okay, treasury yield.
Yeah, so just, you could read up on it, and look out, I am gonna definitely look out for that news. And, um, you know, also, basically, trade based on that, you will see the market reacting to it, yeah?
Okay, thank you.
Sure, no problem. Corey, go ahead, thank you so much.
I'm gonna go over.
Yeah, let me stop sharing it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go over, um, what I'm looking at for two pairs, and then I'm gonna go over, um, some of my losses, so.
Sure.
Like, what I was thinking, and what I did, what I did, what I did. I don't know if you can see it or not, can you see my screen?
Yes, we are.
So, the first pair, um, I just, I'm using, uh, gonna use Trading View too, and like, so, guys, when you're using Trading View, um, if you, even if you have the regular account, like, this. Right, so what I do, and where, um, what I do is, whenever I mark up my charts, um, I post them as ideas. So like, I can always like, have this available, even if it's not in front of my computer. So on my profile, I will like, mark up whatever I feel about the pair, and then, you know, I can come back to this. And it kind of helped me practice too, because I can see, like, I can go, you know, hold on. This is a markup, like, uh, previously, the previous trade, right? G B P A E B, um, and I, I just, let me go to where I see something a lot about, um, so. So I marked this up right here, right? And, um, this is what I thought my TPs, like, thought everything was gonna be, oh, can, you can't hear me, hold on. Sorry. Hang on.
We hear you, I hear you well.
Okay, so like, this was what I thought, my thoughts were for, um, EA, right? And, um, you know, I had a trade right here, I had a trade right here, trade right here. And I marked it up, so that way I knew that, you know, if it moved in whatever direction that it moved, I would have like a setup for it, regardless of what direction, so, like, for this one, um, you know, this particular one moving in a downwards, a descending channel, I knew if it bounced off of this, this is the low, so it will bounce up to the high, push. Or if it rejected this little market structure right here, it would push down at least, touch the, uh, floor of this, of this channel, or push outside of it, and, and if that was the actually, the move that I was really waiting on, for it to bounce off of this, and then push all the way down, boom, it didn't, it actually did the opposite, and you can see, like, I can play this forward, like, this was my trade setup, this was the actual move right here, so, if I had have took the trade from this standpoint, I would have actually been good on this trade, I would have been able to ride this all the way up to this one. And it, it's just good to see, like, what I've done as far as my markup goes versus what actually happened. So like, every time I put the charts under.
Can you, you, you film so we can hear Corey?
Uh, let me, let me. Let me mute these guys, hold on. I'm gonna mute everybody right here. Hold on, check, it is here. Hold on, hang on, my bad. Okay, so, um, you, can you hear me now? Um, put a one in the chat if you can hear me. So that's mostly everybody. Um, hang on, I'll get a mic, hold on. Alright, can, how about now, is it any better?
Much better. I can hear you fine.
Okay, alright, so, um, where were we? Alright, so, um, so like on, uh, where were we, that pair was here, I think? So this pair, like, this pair, uh, like I was saying on E, EA, like, this is something that I marked up on February eighteenth. And, um, I, I put in every, all my thoughts on it or whatnot, and, you know, when you, when you do it like, on, uh, when you share it and publish it, versus just sharing a link out, you can come back to it, and, you know, share this out with somebody else in the group, because like, I know Robley, Robley and I always mark up our charts, and he'll share his charts with me, I'll share my charts with you, with, 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 with the other guys in the group, and then, uh, you know, here, I, I even put my TVs, or I think my, um, TVs will be and whatnot, and why I think that it'll move the way that it moves, so that I understand, like, why I entered the trade, and what was I thinking, or what was I looking for, for the trades. But, that's just, um, just a little tidbit, you know, for, for everybody, like, if you have a Trading View account, even if you have the free account, you can still publish your ideas, and when you publish your ideas, then, another good thing about it is that, um, everybody else sees this, right? So because everybody else sees this, you can look over here into the, the notifications, idea stream. Alright, so, what does this guy think about GJ, or what does this person think about EU? You know, you can kind of mirror up your logic with other traders that are in the trading group, other traders that are in Trading View, or other traders you follow, so, that way, you know, you get a better perspective of what could and what, what your logic is behind it. And you get notifications, like, anytime, this is Robley right here, and, um, this is one of his charts that he, uh, one of my charts he commented on, and he was agreeing with the news setup, you know, or this is, um, this is, um, another setup from GJ, uh, earlier this week, GJ earlier this week, uh. Yeah, it's like, for me, this is my trading journal, so like, I use this, plus I got my own trading journal, you know? But I still do this, and I write it down too, so like, for this GJ setup, I think this went for, uh, um, I think this went for a sell and then a buy, right? I think this went for a sell and then a buy, right? But, I already had, like, alright, I figured it would drop down and push back up. Um, it was in my notes, I think I wrote it in my notes, but I didn't put it on here, but I already got an idea, you know, I can come back to and check this out and see what, what happened, you know? And it's not just in my written down somewhere, so I'm not, you know, I'm able to actually see what happened, you know? So, that's just a recommendation that I have for everybody to use, um, when they're, um, charting up, uh, instead of using, uh, and this is right here, so like, when you go to, um, you go to your chart, uh, let me open up a new one. Let me open up a new one right quick. So, if I go in, look for like, uh, let me see, U C A, I'm gonna talk about that anyway. So like, if I go to U C A, right? And I open up my chart, and I go to the full version of the chart, after I mark it up, um, let's see. Alright, after I mark it up, you know, this is downtrend, whatever, I'm, I'm through marking it up, this is downtrend, at some point, it'll drop, that's, that was my thoughts. And here, like normally everybody goes, and, and they share it for, take a screenshot, and they just copy it, and then share it, that's cool, that, that's cool, and whatnot, but the problem is, you can't come back to that, so, if you go to publish, now you make it available for whatever, you know, to share it out, to come back to, or, you know, just to revamp some ideas, you gotta name it, put it in the description, you can even put in like hashtags, like categories or whatever, like if this was a trade was based off support resistance, you know, supply, demand, uh, just so you can know like, why you, or what you were doing, or what you were thinking, uh, if you got, you can hashtag it, like, alright, this is a new setup, you know, news trading or whatever the case is, you know, just good stuff to use, you know? Was this analysis for a trade, was this just an educational, um, kinda thing, you know? Was it a neutral standpoint, which most of minds are, or was it a long or short, like, how you took the trade? Again, like, it's just a real good tool to use for like, journaling and helping document, and then once you publish it, if you got a Twitter account or StockTweets account, it'll go directly to there, and then after you publish it, it'll go to your ideas section, where you can, uh, come back to that at any time, and like I said, you got everybody's, um, analysis on the charts, combined with what you thought about it, kinda give you that extra little edge that you have, to, um, to, to kind of, figure out if you're making a good trade, you know, um, I can see my, the people that follow me, I can go to their page, see their charts, like, all that kinda good stuff, and, and see what, uh, what their logic is about it as well. So, the first one, um, so, E U is what I marked up so far, um, and E U, this was, um, kinda the old rundown of, uh, of E U, and so, uh, basically what I was saying is the pair looks like an overall buy after the breakthrough of the recent, uh, range of consolidation, is ranging on a weekly, and we currently are at a low of that range on the weekly, on the descending triangle, on the daily. On the four hour, it's a head and shoulder pattern into recent consolidation, prices channeling in an uptrend. On the fields, we got, um, we got, uh, fields, uh, that measure down to the, these suggested levels, um, and, uh, it suggests that it'll be a measured move. Like, um, you know, Oren teaches measuring moves, so like, if I look at this low to this high, this move is ninety-six pips, right? Once we get a retrace of this move, we should get the same move in the, in either the opposite direction or continuation, so, uh, my logic was that it will move from, if it brown- bounces and respect this, um, this particular, uh, move, which is from this low right here, to this high, and we get a retracement, we should get a retracement around this area, and let me just open up this chart right quick. Um, this is G J. G J, where you at, E U? Um, hold on, E U is on here somewhere. Let me just open it from here, alright. E U, open full chart. It's like, even, like I said, even if you don't have a pro, like, I just got off of, um, off of Oren's, um, session, and he had the pro plus, so I told him I had the pro, he told me I need to get a pro plus. So, I'm probably gonna get the pro, pro plus, but, you know, even if you just have the regular account, you can still post your ideas, so, um, so like I was saying, on a weekly, on a weekly, got our downtrend, people look at me crazy, but I like to label my, uh, support resistance levels, so I know where they coming from, whether they coming from the weekly, the daily, or the four hour, or the one hour, or whatever other timeframe. All this is garbage, I know y'all don't see this right now, but overall, this is a descending triangle right here, and we got a head and shoulders on the, on the larger timeframe, right? So, um.
Quick, quick question for you, Corey.
What's up?
Um, so for your trading ideas, um, do, like, would we need to follow you, or do you need to give permissions in order to share?
That's why you do it this way, because once you publish it, it's available to the public, so anybody that's on Trading View can see these, anybody that follows you will see them immediately, you, they'll get notifications, and anytime I post a new idea, you automatically, like, over here, this is where like, the idea stream is, so everybody gets, um, this is where everybody posts their ideas, and, and it follows, and anybody on Trading View is over here listening on the I Q stream, but on your notifications, you'll see, you know, um, you'll see that, you know, if I posted, um, an idea, and somebody reacts to my idea, I can see, you know, alright, if you check, if you thumbs up, that mean you agree with it, or you can come to my idea, and comment below, like, oh, this is garbage, like, you're an idiot, you probably should never trade again, cause what you said was the dumbest crap in the world, hopefully that don't happen, you know? But, you got the, you, you have that extra confirmation, like, that, that, uh, that you are on the right track, you know, uh, this guy right here, Ben Wright, um, he's been following me for a little while, and I always like his trade setups, and I, sometimes I'll go by his charts, I'll look at his charts, and, and he'll look at mine, and like that, if I know Ben's looking at it, or, uh, if I, if I like, if I think that, uh, Robly is looking at it, and I know Robly's, i- his charts are always really dope, then, if he agreeing with it, then it's likely that, you know, we on the same page, or maybe I need to modify something that I seen, you know, just some extra confirmation, you know? So, um, E U, weekly consolidating in this little area, it has been like that for a while since it jumped in this area since, um, November, um, on a weekly, then on a daily, that's when I really started marking up some stuff. Uh, my support resistance levels, uh, I know y'all know how to do that, so, I'm not gonna even go over that, but, uh, my zone for the daily right here, um, and then I just combine, like, alright, if I don't see anything clear from off the weekly, then I just leave the, um, the zones. But like, since I'm on a daily, I don't see anything clear that broke from the zones that match up with the weekly. So, I'll just use my weekly zones to, um, use as on the daily and the rest of the timeframe. So, my zones are here, here, and down here, and like I said, I know you can't see it, but it'll clear up once I get down to the timeframe we'll actually trade from. Then on the four hour, um, on the four hour, same thing, matches up, um, this was my zone, for, this was my support resistance level and my zone from the weekly, here, here, and here. And then I also noticed on the four hour, that we are moving into this, uh, the ascending tri- uh, ascending channel. So, right now, we're kinda in a consolidation area, and that's where this little blue box is, which you probably can't see it. This little blue box right here is my area of recent consolidation, and we're kinda at the low of this channel, at the floor of the channel, so I would look for it to bounce off of this, uh, this channel to push up in continuation, but, I always set up for both scenarios, because this channel could actually fail, so, because we in a descending triangle on a higher timeframe, so, um, this could break down at any point, so it may not come back and test it, so, I kinda just mark it up from, uh, from both scenarios, from each kind of scenario that I have, so, from this low to this, of this move to this high is ninety-six pips, and that's what I was referring to with the measured moves, so like, if we get this, we should get this ninety-six pip move from this low to this high, once we get a, a pullback completion, and we got potential swing points, right now, we at, uh, um, right now, we are, price is currently at thirteen, thirteen, um, thirteen thirty-seven, oh seven, so, we are actually testing, uh, a floor right now of this, um, of this little, uh, box of consolidation, we're testing the floor right now, so, we have swing points above us and below us that we could potentially trade off of, so if we break down, we, our first swing point or first, um, TP would be here around this area, which is twenty-one pips right here. And we got the, I got this from this candle and this, this movement right here, which, that's, that's the reason for the swing point here, and you could either have that swing point off of this wick, or this wick right here, so I, I use this one and this one as the points of, um, where it could go if it break down. If it breaks down any further, we still got another move down to the zero of this, um, field levels. And if the zero for this would be this twelve, uh, one point to twelve seven five, if it breaks down, and if it just, just tanks completely, um, you got a low of this week, and then you also got this week, the, the base of this, um, of this consolidation area right here, and I'm pulling that in based off of the wick lows, and the wick low for this, so, my TPs there would be based off of the wick lows, because you can consider those as swing points, the wicks, consider those as new lows or new, new highs, depending on what direction is going, so, I would be looking to take it down to here, then down to here, and you can see that if, if price kinda did that, you know, like, so if, once it moved up, it created a wick low right here, um, and it bounced off of this, so if it comes back down, I know that I could have this level potentially as a previous, um, as a, as a potential area of, um, that I could take another trade from, and it kinda matches up with, um, with, uh, Lizardo's teacup, inverted teacup, so like, if we looked at, um, if we look, let me see. Let me see. If we took it, Lizardo's inverted teacup, or on here, like, right here, we got inverted teacup, higher, uh, lower low, followed by a higher high, it broke up, break down, and then you buy right here, that, that would be based off of this wick in this area right here, so, so, that was, that was the reason why I picked those TPs on the downside, and so on the upside, because we in this consolidation, we have to actually break out of this consolidation, so, before, if we taking the trade off of this, um, off of this particular, uh, current price area, I'm actually not really looking for it to break out of this consolidation yet, because I know it's gonna get rejected at least one time, so, um, if I'm taking this trade, I'm not taking it for like, the big move until after it breaks out of this area right here, so I would be looking at down here from that thirteen thirty, uh, seven, to maybe here on this little area of resistance right here, or right around, um, thirteen, um, fifty-six nine, that's twenty-six pips. And then, if I, if it, for some reason it push up, and I'm not out of the trade, um, because if it, if it pushes up, it's likely to do something like this. Likely, inside of this channel is likely to push up from here to here, right around this level, cause there's, uh, your recent wick high, right here, this, on this green candle, and then you got other candles matching up to this wick high over here, and over here, still inside of this consolidation area. So, even inside of this consolidation, you could see a rejection right here, and then, if it rejects, you probably looking at this wick low right, this wick low right here, right around here, where you got these candles creating those wick lows, before it actually moves out of this channel, I mean, out of this, um, consolidation right here, if it does this, then I'm looking at it to, to actually push outside of the channel, and if it does, like, push outside of the channel, then I'm looking at taking these levels right here as TPs for the buy. So, I got a TP here, just outside of the channel, up here, and then finally back up to test the, um, this is the, um, the, the ceiling of the ascending, descending triangle, so, I, I would actually take it, try to take it all the way up, but I, if I don't get up here, I'm looking to at least make it to the open of the, um, of this weekly zone, and you can, like I said, you know, you, you got the measure move, again, Oren always talk about this, and you can take this, I measured, when, if I measured this move from the low to this high right here, and then I look for wherever I think is gonna retrace, it can kinda give you an idea of where we think that the market will go, because we're using the measure move, uh, let me, let me see if I cloned it right, alright, so if it breaks from, if, if this is the break from this week, which is right around the three eight two, um, then we gotta, we, it, it basically confirms what we thought, if we get this move, this is the measurement of this whole move right here, and we, if it breaks down off of this pullback right here, then we have this move ninety-eight, ninety-six pips. So, we got a ninety-six potential pip move, and then it, it breaks off of the retracement level of the fields at thirty-eight, or fifty, or six one eight, where it is right now, where it just, right now, this recent move that we looked at over here came from here. The recent move, where we are right now, um, for this recent level right here, this move came from this wick right here, from off of this wick right here, and we'll, we should get it to push up to, um, right now, we had, uh, it pushed up to the seven eight six. So, if it respects that and continues up, then we could look, we're looking at that potential full move of that ninety-six point move right here, you got the, the move, the measurement of the first move, bounce off the retracement level, and then the move up here, which, at, which lines up with our buy situation. It lines up with the fact that this could retest our, um, our zone right up here. So, that's where we would look to try to take our, our TPs, uh, up here around this, uh, fourteen, uh, thirteen four area, and that would be where you go ahead and take profit, or move your stocks up to, to see if it just automatically breaks up through there, sorry for somebody writing on the, uh, writing on the, um, writing on the, uh, screen, so, uh, let me clear that off. Clear all drawings. Alright, so, um, and that, that's for, that's what I see for EU. And like, so, right now, I got it set up for either to buy or to sell. So, if I get the buy, if I get this, um, if I get this to push up, I'll likely wait for it to, um, break out for it from this. Or if I wanna just trade inside of this consolidation, then I know that I can at least push it up to this point. If it breaks down, I know my first TP, I can at least make it to this point. And then, I will kinda like, make my decision after that. If, if I don't get in the trade before it breaks out of this consolidation area, I just take these TP's that I have and just adjust. So, now, this would be my TP one, this would be my TP two. This would maybe be my TP three, then this would be ultimately TP four. So, please stop drawing on the screen. Let me just do this again. To save, how can I disable that? Where can I disable that?
Don't stop doing that. That's so disrespectful. Come on, you know?
Can I disable that? Um, I don't know where to disable it, but, um,
I check on Zoom settings.
Um, hang on. Disable, okay, alright, got it. Okay, so, um, that was on EU, right? So, EU, um, and then, let me just move to the one hour, just to make sure I didn't miss anything. Still in that channel. Still in the channel. We still, we like nearing the floor of the channel. You can see it a little better, actually. Um, sorry, I didn't start right here. So, like I was saying before, your ninety-six point move right here from, from this low to this high, we, we moved in consolidation, um, and then, we got, uh, we could possibly have our push down to retest the thirty-eight, the fifty right here. We already had to retest the, the, the fifty. We didn't quite make it to the thirty-eight, but we got it down to the fifty right here. Um, at this point, um, let me just circle that, so you can see what I'm talking about. The fifty right here. This was the retest of the fifty right there. And, uh, it broke down. It didn't make it to the thirty-eight, but that's cool. Didn't make it down to the thirty-eight, but you retraced fifty percent of the move. So, you can, um, at least expect for a move to be the same now, on, in, uh, in the same direction. So, hang on. Somebody just, yeah, so, I would at least look to take it up to you. I would prefer to buy on this pair. Uh, but, if the sale happens, the sale happens, um, and will, we, I would handle it either way, whether to sell or to buy, because I'm already marked up for both circumstances, you know? I'm al- already gotta take it accounted for. And, um, when you guys, like, go to publish it, like, remember I was telling you, publish it, you right here? After I marked it up and did everything, I'm putting, I'm annotating right here, document over here, and publishing it from here. And then, I can share that out to you guys, um, just from, uh, my page on, um, on Trader View, um, or I could send the link to it from Trader View, and I got it already. So, this is my GJ. This is GJ for me. Again, I always do both directions, the down move and the upward move. Uh, so that way, I can have both things accounted for. Um, so, GJ from the weekly. Uh, from the weekly, we moving into a, a downward channel right here, descending channel. And we are, we've, we've, um, we're moving in a downtrend right now, uh, on the weekly zones over here. On these levels, I won't go over that part, um, support resistance over here, and then I have a lower, uh, on, on the bottom. And then, on the, um, daily, still in this channel. So, this channel is respecting itself, uh, respecting, the, the channel is being respected. So, we can expect that for, um, for this pair, that if we get either near the ceiling or the floor on a channel, we should have a move. And right now, on the daily, you can see that it's already, uh, bounced off. I don't really count this, but, you know, you can, of course, but this was news, right here. And this is just basically, like, like Orin always says, the news just moved the market in a direction that it was supposed to go anyway. And because we were already moving towards the floor of this, um, of this channel, right here, we already got, we got the bounce right here. So, this just sped up the process. This is like, if, this, on this day, we knew it was going towards the channel floor. Uh, we already rejected this support, and then it just, the news came out and just pushed it all the way down. And then, price re-corrected itself and pushed back up to this, um, to the high of this move right here. And this is rejection. This, this move right, right now, it moved us into consolidation within another channel, right? So, we got rejection off of this daily support resistant level. And this is where our recent action is, uh, reacting to right now. Price as it stands is near this, um, daily zone right here. So, uh, on the four hour, on the four hour, we got our move right here off of this. It moved, price, the price moved into another channel. Another channel of market structure right here. And then, now, we have another test off of a floor right here. This rejection off the, uh, off the one hour and the four hour right here. You measure this move, it's already completed itself, that's two hundred and fifty-five pips. So, if we get a strong retest, right? So, actually, this move was like two moves right here. We got the first move from this low to this high, that was a hundred and ninety-six pips. Then it pulled back down to like, right around the, um, eight-eight-six, um, seven-eight-six, probably. Uh, if, let me get the fields out right quick. If I measure this part. Yeah, let me zone in. Um, yep, so, this move came off of, the, let me clean it up. This move came off of, yeah, right around the seven-eight-six right here. So, this move came off of seven-eight-six. So, you got the first move here from this low to this high. And then, you got your retracement here from this low to this high. The market gave you that same move back again. So, it's a hundred and ninety-six pips. Once it found this, um, level of support and retraced off of this, which you can see why it did it right here, this swing point right here. I don't know if you guys trade swing points, but you can find swing points based off of weeks. Um, and that's what this traded off of. This traded off of a swing point. And, um, your retracement completed itself. And then, you had the move, the market give you this same one-ninety-six on this two hundred and fifty-five pip move of, to the, to this high side right here, to this high, right here. Which is reacting off of this daily, uh, zone right here. So, let me draw that and add that in. This daily zone right here. Which is over here. This daily zone right here, which is probably a little more than that. Let me draw, pull it up to this high. So, we got a daily zone right there. And that's where price reacting off of right now. And it rejected this zone and moved into a smaller channel or market structure right here. So, right now, price is here at, um, uh, one-four-four-three-eight-one. So, I am, I know that I gotta move. Because I'm in this channel now, um, I know that I'm either retesting the ceiling of the channel or retesting the floor. And I just retested the floor of, I mean, the ceiling of this channel right here, that we're in right now. So, if I wanted to take this trade, I'm gonna look for it to break out of this market structure right here. Either break to the upside, which I don't actually want it to do. I wanted to push down for, um, for this. I wanted to seal off right here, down to, um, like, seven, uh, one-three, one-four-three-seven-nine to push down right here, or here, or here, at one of these levels. Cuz what this will do is, this will confirm that, um, this move, this move right here is still valid. This will confirm, if it pushes down to the fifty percent of this move, this will confirm the bigger move that should happen. So, if we get a fifty percent retracement, that's when this, this, uh, TP, this, uh, movement will come into play. Cuz fifty percent is right around this little one-hour zone right here. Um, right here. Fifty percent of this. I don't have my fields out right now, but I, I just know that this is, um, right around fifty percent. Somewhere around, yeah, I, I don't, I don't have it out, but if I, um, if I take the fields out, it, it's probably right around fifty percent, but I'll do it. Hang on. So, this is my fields from this high to that low of that move. And my fifty percent lineup with this zone right here. So, that's what we, that's what I would love to see happen. Because that means that I could get this whole move if this comes down here, likely to get this whole move. That'll put me from this area up to this high. And then, it also, what this move does is, this also confirms that this, um, that this channel that's downtrending on the weekly and the daily is still valid. If it moves up to this point, or this point right here, to retest this channel. Because if it does that, that means that we are likely to have a breakdown, um, a rejection of this. So, that would set up our next trade, if it comes back all the way up to that point. So, if it comes all the way up here, from this move right here, that I have drawn up, then we would be looking at, we would already have the beginnings of our next trade setup. So, now, we'll know that either we get a break from here, breakdown from here, or we get a breakout of the, um, of the channel on the, on the higher timeframe. So, if this move completes itself, we know we got this move right here, or we got this move to the upside. So, that's why I always like draw both scenarios. So, I, so that way, I can account for it ahead of time. So, if, cuz, you know, the market doesn't really give you what you want all the time. And it never moves in the direction that you expected to, e- especially not the way you expected it to. So, I just kinda make sure that I cover all bases on that. And if it does push down at any one of these earlier timeframes, if it pushes down right here, right here, or right here, then I can just use these levels that I marked off right here, right here, right here, as my TP's going up, you know? So, I would still have those TP's in place, but I would just adjust them based off of the trade that I'm taking. Whether I'd take it for, um, whether it comes down here and I take this move to, um, the forty, one-four-four-two-one or, or up into this zone right here, the top of this zone right here. So, um, that was, that's GJ for me. And I, I'm gonna share all this to you guys, um, so that way you can have it. And it's got, on there, it's got, um, all of the stuff that I wrote up on there already. So, uh, you can go back to it and see it. So, that's, this is, um, this is Euro USD. And then, this is GJ. Uh, hang on, I'm gonna, let me post that. Don't use that one. Don't use that one. Don't use that one. I'm gonna send it from here. So, here's GJ. Yep, alright. Alright, so, let me just, uh, copy the link. DJ. Like I said, like, I, I think you guys should use Trading View to like, share out your stuff, you know? Cuz it's just, it give you a lot, you know? And like I said, like, I can come back to this years later, you know? If I ever wanted to know, like, what was I thinking last year when I took this UCAD trade I'm about to talk about? And, you know, understand like, why I took that trade, what was I thinking about it? And instead of just writing it down, you got a visual of what you actually did. So, that way, it's available to you, even if you don't remember. Like, just looking at it sometimes isn't enough for me, you know? Sometimes, I gotta see it, I gotta feel it, I gotta hear it, you know? And this kinda give me that opportunity to, to do that, you know? Um, to see it all. So, UCAD, this is one of the trades I lost on this week. And I ain't lose on it, but I didn't take as big a profit as I should. Um, I didn't mark this one up um, yet, already, but I'm gonna just go over like, why I took the trade and what I was thinking, right? And really, the reason why I, I kinda lost on the trade was because I fell asleep. And, um, I had been up trading with Cam on the, um, on the, um, that London, um, what she call it? The London, um, somebody tell me, what they call it? The London, um, payout, yeah, yeah, London payout, right, right, right. So, this, for me, when I looked at this, like, I knew I saw a harmonic setup off of this, right? Um, saw the harmonic setup on this. Had my, my, my X, A, my B, and C, and then my D up here, right? And so, what else you can see is that you got support resistance. And so, this is a swing point right here, right? You know that if it breaks below this, you should get the price to come back and retest this level right here. And what I saw was, um, I remember, um, I think, who else was trading? And what I saw was, um, I remember, um, I think, who else was trading this too? I can't remember who else it was, but when I, I saw this, but it was like, and I got in this trade right before that news came out on um, UCAD. And, so I'm so mad at myself, because I messed this trade up. And like, I at least could've got a larger profit than I did. I think I ended up closing the trade out. I had two orders in, and one was for, um, one was uh, one I closed out right at like break even, so I made like five dollars off of that. Then the other one, I think I took a loss of like thirty, twenty-five dollars on it. But, I'mma show you why I did it. And so, I knew that if it broke this and came back up to this point, I sell the D, right? Right here, um, sell on D. And um, after I saw this harmonic setup, so I knew, once I got to this point over here, like this is when I, I realized like, alright, it, it pushed up through this, but it respected this, this particular swing point right here. It respected this swing point right here. And that was my entry. That was, that was where I wanted my entry to be, right here, um, on, at this point. And I, I missed that entry, so, missed that entry right here. So, my next logic was to take it off of um, this next swing point. That's right here. Um, let me, how you grab this thing, alright. It's the next swing point right here. So, because what happened was, it broke through this level, and came back and pushed up right here on this, and I took this from the fifteen minute. And I got in the trade good, like I got in there and I thought I was gonna, I, I knew I was gonna kill this trade, right? And so, my TP was to take it down to here. Right here, right? This was gonna be my TP, right? Actually, I take that back, I'm just telling you how even worse it was for me. I used this was my TP. So, I got in the trade up here at the top, and it, it came in, I, I pulled in, I, I pulled into the trade right here, once it uh, came up. I still consider that as a retest of that area, cause even though it didn't come in and wake me up, I think I entered in right here. So it wick me in, right, right here, right around here, it wick me in. And I, that was perfect entry, like, that was one of my better entries. So I'm thinking like, oh, this is gonna be a nice trade, as soon as I, soon as I, I put, I used the um, I used a uh, a sell stop, a sell limit. And I used the sell stop, so I, I got wicked in right here, and then I took another entry right around here. So, soon as I got in, it did exactly what I wanna do, but I went to sleep. I went to sleep and it pushed down from here, from this low, and this little asshole came right down here and did not take my profit. Right down there, you see how close this did me? You see how dirty this did me? So I'm all mad, right? And uh, if, if I'm all mad, cause I don't get to take my, my twenty pips right here. I'm thinking that, I knew it was gonna come back down here, cause this is the midway of the cypher pattern, the harmonic, right? So, you, when you got a harmonic and you selling the D, then you looking to take the trade at least down to the, the middle, the middle point, right here. That should be like, once you see this sale setup, this is where your um, TP should, should likely be off of this area right here. And I, I pretty much made it. Except for I missed this, what is this? I can't even count how far it is. How many pips did I miss this by? Literally one pip, are you kidding me? I didn't even see this, hold on. Let me uh, zoom this in a little bit. I can't even see, you can't even see this, that, that there is space in between this, really. Yeah, so one point two pips, and I didn't get pulled out of the trade, so. I, the move pushed back up, guess where my stop loss was? Right here. Oh, it wick me in, it knocked me out of the trade, it take me out of the trade, and then it moved right back down for this whole move right here. And I was, it was ugly, I was so mad. I was so mad, I ain't even gonna tell y'all how mad I was, cause I had been sitting on that trade like the whole night, waiting on this trade, and I got into it, and that thing that, I would've been happy if it had at least pulled me out right here. Um, but, it did me dirty, and I missed, what, what is this, man? My twin trade, so this would've been a hundred and eighty pips that I got. At least, the max potential I could've got was a hundred and eighty pips, but, did me dirty. So, you know, I didn't get to get this money. I actually came out with a loss, I was mad, I was like PO, because this, it didn't wick me out the trade for a profit, but it wick me out the trade for the loss, like, you know? So, that was it, y'all, um, that was it for me. Nobody seemed to have any questions, anybody got questions? What I see UCAD doing, um, let me see. Let me see. Let me clear all the drawings. I don't know yet, so I gotta mark it up from, from scratch. Let me see. Mark up UCAD from scratch. I gotta revamp the logic on this. So, UCAD from scratch. Alright, here is price on the weekly. It's right here. Um, hang on, let me mark it up, and I'll say. Alright, I'm with my zones on the weekly. Daily. Baby, what we got? We got a level here. So, this is coming off of the daily. Yeah, calling this. Coming off of the daily. We got support existing on this, yeah. Coming off of the daily. That's pretty much it for that, dude. Got a hidden shoulder, not a hidden shoulder. We got. This is right around fifty, three one, three eight two on here. So. Got a downtrend here. Reaches. Yeah. And also, let me see what the candles look like. This could be in our channel, too. What we got, one, two, three, four, no. Okay, alright, so. Up to the four hour. Got Batman. Double top. Triple top, right here. Double bottom, yeah. Injection off of this low, this weekly. And do you respect this counter trend? I don't know yet, alright, we got another level, four hour. Should be, respect this, if it respect this. Coming off of the four hour. Then we got this low, four hour, right here. So, UCAD. This looks like um, I see two situations right now. It's the first time, this is the second time it came near this uh, weekly zone right here. The logic would be for it to push back up to around here. To retest this um, descending trend line, or, that's, that's for the buy situation. For the buy situation, would be for it to come back and reject off of this level, anywhere between where it is currently, down to here, and reject this level, anywhere from here to here. So, um, I would be looking for rejection between this area right here, and push back up. If it fails this, um, steals, I still, if it breaks through this, I still can see a buy um, at these lows right here, um, but. Y'all. At these lows here, in this area. Ultimately to push, like, so I, I see a buy, the buy opportunity for me comes between these lows from hitting this zone, or this zone, and then push back up, back to the, to respect. If it, if it buys off of here, I see a respect in this, and then rejection. If it breaks this and pushes all the way down, I see that it does this. It breaks out of this, push down here, to this point, and then push back up to respect this line, and then push down from there. Until wherever our next zone is below that. And, I still gotta, I gotta kinda see what happens, cause this was um, a new day. So, I gotta kinda see what happens after the market open. Where we kinda see price moving, uh, once it open? Do we start to get an initial rejection uh, of this price and start getting buyer? Cause these buyers waiting down here right now. Like, his buyer's here, and his buyer's here, that are waiting to buy the market back up. Um, but it's just, who outweighs the, the, the market? Are the, do the buyers outweigh the market right now, or do the sellers outweigh the market? So, I would probably just, I would probably hold off on this one, um, before I could say clearly what I think. Because I, I feel like, we got a little channel right here, market structure. We can see it, respective of floor this channel. You got a confirmation, you got two confirmations already. You got it, uh, the floor of this channel. You also have a zone, and um, you, you got two, you got a, I'm sorry, you got three already, you got the channel floor, you got the zone, and then you got the floor of this descending um, triangle, that are confirming that there should be um, some action here. And to the upside, or a break of that to the downside. So, that's why I say I always set up two scenarios. Uh, I, I won't go into the TPs yet, but like, if, if it buys immediately off of this area, if it buys immediately, like, if the market opens up and it rejects immediately, you got um, a potential first move, a potential first move of like, yeah, almost twenty pips? If it pushed like immediately, um, which we know that could happen, or we couldn't. Or, you know, so I, I see it going, if it opens up and it rejects it, we could see it push down to here, back up to here, initially. Um, for, this is thirty-four pips, right? That's if it pushes down, and if it immediately rejects that area. Let me slide this over. That's if it pushes down to this floor of this zone. If it immediately rejects, that's where we got this first move right here, to um, this week. So that's like seventeen points, that's all that is. If, if it pushes um, from either one of those zones and pushes past that, those two TPs, um, let's just do from the extreme low, we probably got it going to here, to reject the um, to reject this, um, the, the ceiling of this descending trend, this descending um, this ascending triangle, or from the higher timeframe. That's probably it for that, for the move back up. And then of course, then if it breaks through this, we got a whole different set of circumstances. If it breaks down from this area, um, breaks down from this area, that we are right now, current price is here. My first TP will probably be here, that's thirty-one pips around this area. I'm looking at this week right here, to be my TP. And then my next TP, I'm looking at this week low right here, to be my next CP. Um, this is from, if price breaks down from where it is now. Right here. That's forty-seven pips. And then um, my last TP would probably be um, from where price is now, to the full move. From where price is now to the full move, the bottom of the zone, that's another sixty five pips. And then if it just completely just, oops. If it just completely blows out, then we gotta look for another TP somewhere else, which we have to go back. A little bit for, so. We probably looking at another TP if it breaks all the way down. To probably. Right here. Whatever that is right there, so. Current price. Push down. To right around here. That's on one hundred and eighteen pips. But that just depends on how the market open up, so I won't really, like I, I'll keep this. I'll keep this and, and save it, but I will probably look at this again before I made a. Before I made a decision on it. Because I want to see what happens with price or at this area. Because it's really at a pivotal area right now where it could break because all this little area right here is structured. That's forming a zone right here. And then we got another area of support with a zone right underneath that. So I, I would wait to see how it reacts to that, so. But, and then if it. If he reacts any differently, safer, it pushed all the way down to one of our TPs and then push up. I would just reverse the TPs that I made, so if you push down here. And then it decided it wanted to move up to go to, to make this move. Then I would just say, hey, alright, this is my next TP. This is my next TP, this is my next TP, this is my next TP. So I will still use the same TP, but just in the opposite direction. So. As you can. That's how I see it anyway. Yeah, I was mad, man, I missed this little move, man, I, I could have been. Could have been, could have been chilling. Uh, yeah, yeah, I could use trailing stops. I, I just, like I said, I, I put the trade in and I left the stop. Where I went to sleep. I left it from. So when I took it, like, let me see, where were we? Yeah, right here, so. When I took it. Right here, here, here. Yeah, when I took it. My TP, I just left it because I was like, oh, I ain't worried about it, this is going down. And. Lo and behold, it went down, it did what I said it was gonna do, it just didn't go all the way down. That, and then didn't want to give me one point two more pills. You know, so that was just kind of like, you know, this was the move right here. I went short right here. And I'll show you where my TP was, I mean, my stop loss was, my stop loss was right here. Right here. This is my stop law, this was about to be the trade, this was my stop loss. And then this was the trade that I was trying to get out of it, right? This is my whole move right here, this is where I was trying to get this. I got the entry, it was great, it was great. And my, my logic for my TP and my stop loss was. I used this former, this swing point right here. We got a swing point right here, so I used that as where I would gauge my stop loss from and my entry from, right? Then I took. I figured that if it didn't break above this candle, that I would get a good stop loss. And I was trying to use this little low right here. This little low. Right here to kind of measure up where my stock would be. So I use this candle and then this low to make my stop loss. And that is, that stop loss was. From where I entered was. No, I take that back, my stop was. My stop was up here. It was up here, like twenty points above, right? So. My logic was that my stop loss, it wasn't my stop loss that, that killed this trade. My stop loss was actually great. My stop loss is great, I, I just was being impatient, that's really what this was. I was being real impatient and then I woke up and I was like, I didn't want to be in here for the news. Because after I saw it reject right here and then pull me out, I was like, you know what? Let me just get out because this eight o'clock, eight thirty candle. I'm gonna get out of this trade because I don't want to be in for the news, which end up it, it, it did, it came up and it hit. I just let it stop me out because I didn't want to be in for the, for the trade. But if I had have taken it and still paid attention, you know, it would have turned out, I would have got an eighty some, ninety some point move. But I was at work, I was trying to trade from work and I didn't want to have to take this trade from the toilet like I normally would have. So I just waited and just closed it out and just went on about my business. So, but that was my mistake, I ended up taking a loss on it, but you know, it's all good, you know? The logic was there, the setup was right. It, it did the move that I wanted it to do and I still lost, you know? I still took a loss on the trade, you know? And that's just one of those, just one of those situations just where, you know, you did everything right, you know? You did everything, you did all your math, all your homework was good and your teacher just was being, you know, just. She was just not working with you that day, so she, 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 she dropped the hammer on me. So I ain't get to get that money. You know, I would have, I, I end up. This would have been a hundred dollar, a hundred and some dollar trade. If I had a, if it had a went ahead and pulled me out. But if I had have got in here on this, this, I might have been a thousand some dollars, you know? I don't know, you know? So just one of those, I hate, I missed it. So. That was it, man, if you guys, you know, I'm at, I'm always gonna be in the group. My mouth dry, I recorded this. I feel like we should do this all the time, you know? And this ain't just for about me, you know, this ain't just about me getting on here. This is just for us to, to come in here and just ask each other, you know? Like we all been in the chat group, we all been in Kim sessions all this time, you know, like. We are here to support each other, you know? And like, if Kim's doing good, that mean we all should be good, doing good. And if anybody lagging behind, that's why we gotta pick each other up. And that's what this was, that's why we did this, because we just want to try to pick each other up. And you know, if you're not doing good, jump on here and tell us what you didn't do, what happened, tell us about your trade. Mark your chart up, you know, and just share it and we can just go over it personally, you know, like. It, Kim can do everything, Lizardo can do everything, Lou can do everything, you know, he can't. Everybody can't have one on one sessions with the gurus, you know? But that's why we got each other's support, you know? We can always leverage each other, you know, everybody. I'm not the greatest trader in the world, but you know, I know what I know. I know that I can help somebody and I know the rest of you guys can help somebody too, so you know? Get on here, share the chart, let's look at what we got for the week. So now, like now, we already amped up, you know, we ready for Kim to get on tonight. And we, it, I like to do this, like, you know, mark up my charts, give my idea, you know? And. I'm, I usually look forward to seeing if Kim gonna go over a pair that I marked up and see what she think about it. And you know, if she mark up some stuff the same way I did, I'd be like, oh shit, yeah, man, I'm about to take that trade, you know? I'm definitely taking this trade, you know? Because it's that, that extra confirmation that you thinking though, that you thinking the right way. That you thinking along the lines of somebody that's making money. Mark up charts, super confusing. I'm confused on the chart marker, on mine or just in general? Kalia. Turn, turn it on, mark, turn it on, turn on your microphone.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear.
Okay, it just looks real jumbled, um, like do we have to mark up our charts?
Sorry, go ahead. I was gonna say, like, I've been doing this for a couple of few months, right? And at first, none of this really made sense. But now that I see it and constantly really paying attention, I'm amazed at how much I get, like all the stuff he put on here, I totally understand. And I just feel like it takes a minute for your brain to wrap around. But the more confirmations you have, the better.
You were saying like, you know, it's just marking them charts is confusing, right?
Yeah, I mean, I watched Kim mark up her charts and other people and it just looks like, like there's so much going on at once.
Yeah. So when you, when you taking your, are you trading live or are you trading?
No, sir. No, I'm still in demo.
Oh, okay, so like when you are looking at the chart, like what, when you, are you taking any of the demo, any trades in your demo account?
Yes.
You taking them?
Just slow, yes, sir, slowly, but yeah, I'm, I'm trying to take them.
Okay, so when you take the trades, are you like? Are you just taking the, the signals or are you like setting it up before you take the trade?
No, it'll be from the signals.
Right, okay. So when you, when you take the signals, right? And if you want to trade on your own versus using, just using the signals, like you gotta. The reason why you mark the charts of is so that you know why the price is doing what it's doing. So it looks confusing right now. And it's, it's really, sometimes it is confusing, like it's, it is, you know? But you just gotta get in there and, and, and like, just even though you take the, the signal, right? Try to figure out why they, why they gave you that signal, right? Like, if you understand, you understand support resistance yet?
He said supporting resistance?
Yeah.
It's a little foggy.
You, okay, so.
But the support, okay.
The easy.
There's the support at the top.
That's the bottom.
There's a bottom.
Yeah, that's the bottom. Then the resistance is the top. So that's what I was saying, like this is, this would be support right here.
Okay.
On this line, on this area right here. The easy, the easiest way that beginners traders can find the support resistance is on the line chart. On the line chart, all you doing is looking at, hold on, hold on. All you doing is looking at every sharp point, right?
Oh, okay.
Anytime you make a sharp point, a V right there, you know you've got support or resistance right there. Then like you, you can mark that off as a support resistance, right?
Okay.
Because this level like a bunch of times, I got support right here. I got Vs up here, this support up here and look for like at least three towns. You got, looking for that, hold on, who raised a hand? God, hold on. You don't need it? I need.
You can hear me?
I can.
Okay, so I think what she needs to start doing first is probably go over the IML Academy.
Yeah.
And she needs to start to mark up her charts.
Yeah.
Because, because everything's gonna be like scrambling to her because she's never marked up any charts. But because tomorrow, it's just give us a confirmation to see where our prices are going. So until you start marking up charts, it's free on Trading View, just start marking it up and try to trap the price in that direction that you think it's going in.
Okay.
It'll make more sense, do you have, are you in IML Academy?
No, I, I did it before, but.
You probably don't have it now, so if you want, go on YouTube and the first thing you need to start, just go to YouTube and put support and resistance.
Yeah.
Once you get that basic understanding that price is basically just going from support to resistance and then breaking out to a new zone. But whatever you don't have, if you don't have IML Academy, go to YouTube and Google it. And then if you want, even try. Babypips.com can give you the, the, you know, black and white breakdown of it too, but if you want to see like hands on, like visual, do YouTube. But start with support and resistance.
Okay.
Alright.
And like, once you find something that you like, like you're gonna hear the words that they're telling you, like. You, once you hear support resistance, you may hear rejection, like what does that mean? You know, you might hear trend line, what does that mean? Like, I was like self taught before I came into IML. And I just kind of learned everything from YouTube, right? But what was happening was like, I, I wasn't really getting this success that I wanted because I just. I learned too much, you know? I was just going like, I was overload, I OD'd on YouTube, you know, and. What IML helped me do was like consolidate, like, yeah, I know about all these other stuff, but yeah, I know about all this craziness. But how can I use it to actually be profitable? That's, that's what IML did for me and then it's the community. Like, when you trading alone or when you trading in a free group, you know, you don't have that, that community. Like I can't just go in and, I can, I had some free groups that I was going into. And like, nobody was making no real money, you know? But. You got the traders like this dude make, Lizardo made twelve thousand dollars last week. Like, I see the profit, you know? Then you got Kim, like, I see what, what they're doing, you know? So it's like you, it's like that saying where you gotta, if you want to be a millionaire, you gotta act like a millionaire and put yourself around. People that are in a millionaire mind state that are doing the numbers you want to do. So that's, that's for me, that was worth the charge right there for me, you know? If the, if when you first starting off, like your first goal should be to make the money for your IML subscription. Even whether you, whether you find your two people. And do the recruiting portion and let them pay for your subscription. Or whether you're trading to make the one sixty for the basic every month. Like if you can do that, then you don't even have to think about the, the cost of it anymore because you're gonna get it back. You're gonna get it back regardless, like you take Kim's new setups, sometimes, you know? Last, and last week on new setups, I traded like nine different setups. And I made like fifteen hundred, you know, just on new setups, you know? And I only traded new setup last week, you know? And just on that alone, like you ain't even, I am mail subscription, what is that? You know, you like, you done paid for that three or four times over, you know? So, you know, if you not in a, you know, if you in a financial position right now that you can afford this. Then, you know, handle that, you know, like, don't, don't think about the cost. You're running a business, you know? When you're running a, you're, you're, you own your own business as a trader, you just don't have product and you're not providing the service, but you're running a business at the same time. And in businesses, there's losses, you know? In businesses, sometimes you lose and you just. In businesses, sometimes you lose and you just, there's also business costs. You have to pay to run your business. And that's what you're doing when you subscribe to IML because you got your business costs. That's all it is, you know? And my, my wife, she, um, she runs a business, she's a, um, Black Kids author. Um, and I, if you're a black woman and you have a black daughter, I know one hundred percent that you've heard of my wife book before. And, you know, but my wife always, you know, she coming up with new ideas, you know what I'm saying? She, she take losses, you know? She tried to do party supplies, you know? And she lost a lot of money on that, you know? But it's a business cost, you know? She, it's a business cost, it, it get written off later on down the line as a business expense, you know? And that's the same way you gotta think of IML as the, the monthly subscription is a business cost. Uh, but do you make your money back if you take it, the full opportunity of what it's bringing you? Like if you go through the IML Academy, if you go, get on these, um, educator sessions, go to the conferences, meet these guys, you're getting the value that you just spent on this one, whatever it is per month, you know? So, you know, I, I've never been a person to join a multi-level marketing, um, company before, never, ever. If, if I had a, somebody had've came to me like this and I, like, it took for me to meet Lou, Lazzardo, before I could even think about this, like, I would've never, if somebody else had came to me and was like, yeah, you need to join this cuz you'll learn how to trade better. I would've been like, eh, mm, alright, whatever, I, I ain't, alright, cool, bruh. Alright, alright, I hear you. But when I met Lazzardo, it was like, you know, alright, this dude is actually getting it in, like. I, you know, he, I see what he's doing, I see the numbers he putting up. Cuz I was in the chat, you know, I was seeing the calls he was making. So I was like, oh, okay, alright, well, he's going in the direction that I wanna go in. So maybe I might need to join this organization. So that, that was why I did that. That's, that's where I, that's why I think we all, that's how I think everybody should look at doing something and joining IML. Just, you can get in free groups, you can YouTube all day, but you just don't have that community, you know? Like, you can't just go to your sister or your brother or your mother or your uncle and be like, man, I, let me tell you about these pips I got today, you know? Or let me tell you about this, this, um, support resistance zone that I just wicked into, like. They ain't gonna look at you like you crazy. Then you gonna feel sad and just go into the Telegram group and like try to see if anybody awake when you, when you come up with this, so. Yeah. So, you know? Any more questions? Nope. Alright, well, I'm gonna post this, uh, uh, in the group too. For this UK, uh, I, I haven't, um, put TP's or, or any logic on this, I'll just publish it anyway. Um, so if you follow me on, um, on, um, on TradingView, you'll get my, um, my setups for this and on the rest of them, the pairs we talked about. Um, so yeah. And it's recorded and I'll send the link out if you want it, uh. If you want, if you want the link, just, uh, shoot me a, a message, direct message and I'll get it to you. Alright, peace out, peace out, peace out, peace out. Hope we, uh, can do this again.